Order. First item is roll call.
Joe.
Here.
Here.
Wait.
Yep.
Kramer.
Yep.
Here.
Rachel.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is an update on Mindot's Trunk Highway 210 reconstruction project and the I-94 detour. Due to whether they're going to not be here in present, in person, but by electronic Zoom. So can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Well, over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'll just take a minute here to. Let me screen.
We can't hear you very well.
Okay, I'll try to speak up. I just sent a share request.
One moment, please.
Okay.
You should be able to share, Laurie.
Okay, so. Okay. All right, are you able to see my screen?
There you go.
I think in a moment, we can hear you better for sure.
Okay, well, that's good. Let me know when you can see it.
Laurie, as a backup, we have your presentation.
Is it not coming up?
No, we have your presentation ready. We can show it through our system if you want us to.
Okay. I can hear the mayor very well. I can't hear others very well. So if I miss something that's being said, let me know. So this is the Highway 210 reconstruction project at I-94, the west junction. I'm Laurie Vanderheider. I'm the Mindot project manager for this project. And today I'll give you a project overview and discuss the existing conditions, the design alternatives considered, the option that was selected, go over cost participation and maintenance responsibilities, and then I can take questions at the end. Or if you have questions during my presentation, feel free to interrupt me. So the project begins where the four lane starts currently, and it goes to Western Avenue, and will include the I-94 ramp. The project includes bridge replacement, ADA improvements, ramp realignment, intersection control, lighting upgrades, and reconstruction of the pavement. Today, there is a signal at the Redwood Lane intersection. The western ramps are offset, as you can see here, and the. There are two bridge structures, and there are currently no pedestrian facilities across the bridge and to the Walmart destination. And that was one of the items that was brought up during our equity and transportation interviews, was that due to the state hospital having been in Fergus Falls, that there's still a high population that does not drive. And so the pedestrian facilities was something that would be desired. So we considered three alternatives, utilizing the existing northern alignment of the four lane with roundabouts. Okay, Tom Lundberg just sent a message saying he was having trouble connecting. The north roundabout option, the north signal option, and then utilizing the southern lanes of the existing four lane with roundabouts. So this is the northern roundabout option. And some of the benefits of this is that roundabouts allow for continuous flow of traffic. The western ramps would be realigned. There would be less fill required in this quadrant. There would be a loss of some trees along here when we realign this ramp. And the reason we realigned it this way is some of the concerns that had been raised about this ramp is that you are merging, you know, you're coming down here at a curve, you have this short merge distance, and then you're, you know, looking over your shoulder, and you look up, and there's the railroad bridge abutment. So we realigned this to allow for a longer merge distance. This option, and all of the options, will include PED facilities across the bridge and to the Walmart Mabel Murphys intersection. Another concern we had heard during public engagement was that this ramp is on a steep grade when you come up to the stop sign. And by utilizing this northern alignment, we gained, you know, just a little bit of additional length and are able to flatten that approach up at the top. And it also, the roundabouts, allow for a smoother transition from the four lane to the two lane. In all three options, we are eliminating one of the bridges. We're making the transition from four lane to two lane at the eastern ramp and build, replacing two bridges with one. The north signal option has many of the same features as the previous one, with the ramps realigned to PED facilities, the increased merge, the flatter grade here. But some of the, and we still are losing trees over here, but some additional downsides are that the signal, all three of these intersections would be signalized, and they may experience queuing at the ramp. And there's already queuing that occurs at this signal. It would require increased fill at this quadrant, and that would result in the purchase of additional right-of-way. And there would be a skewed, slightly skewed intersection for the eastern ramp. The south roundabout option, again, offers some of the similar benefits as the previous ones. The roundabouts have the continuous flow of traffic. The ramp realignment is facilitated more easily. But it would still have the large embankment removal here. There would be the loss of trees here, but also additional loss of trees on the eastbound off-ramp. And we would not get the flattened slope on the westbound off-ramp. The alternative that was selected was the northern roundabout option. And these next two slides show more of a close-up of the roundabouts. So the roundabouts were designed with a design, semi as a design vehicle. And then we used a control vehicle, which would be a vehicle that is larger than a semi that we wanted to make sure could get through. So that the yellow is the normal circulatory path that the design vehicle could make. The pink is a truck apron that a larger vehicle could get through utilizing, and the green is turf. So here's the roundabout at Redwood, the roundabout at the western ramps, and the roundabout at the eastern ramps. And you'll notice that there's trail all along the project on both sides of the road. And here's a picture of the vehicles that we use. So here's the standard semi that we use for designing the roundabout. And then this is the control vehicle that it's designed to accommodate. And we, in coming up with this design vehicle, we talked with both Harvest Homes and Ziegler Cat, and also pulled over-dimension permits from our permits department. In, during the design of the project, we had a aesthetics committee that the city suggested names for. And this is what the group came up with, is this decorative pattern on the bridge rail, the decorative railing. The pilasters will have the decorative lighting. And the butterfly represents a future art. So that is not part of the project, but the pilaster has been designed to accommodate art. The bridge will have the city's name basically stamped into the concrete. And there are planters at the ends of the bridge. The plants are not included in the project, but the planter will be built with the project. And the lighting on the bridge is decorative. Cost participation, this is the cost participation layout. The yellow is 100% city cost, so this is the Redwood Lane leg of the roundabout. The green represents, well, blue is 100% state cost. The green represents one-third, two-thirds. Because Mabel Murphys is a private entrance and has less than, I believe it's 500 vehicles per day, that cost is split based on the percentages of the remaining legs. So, or the number of remaining legs. So there are two state-funded legs and one city-funded legs. So this is one-third city cost, two-thirds state cost. And the, Mindot would pay 100% for Batuminus Trail on the north, and we would pay for Standard with Sidewalk on the south, which is six foot. The city chose to go with Trail on the south. And so Mindot would basically pay for whatever the cost of Standard with Sidewalk is, but the cost of Batuminus was less than that. So that's why this is shown as 100% state on that side. When we get to the Lincoln Avenue side, the east side of the interstate, the trail is, it looks like it's green, but it's a teal color. And that is, it's 100% city, but that is, the city applied for TA money, and they were awarded. I believe it was, I wrote it down here. Oh, I guess I didn't, I looked it up, but I didn't write down. I believe it was 110,000 approximately for the TA money. And then there's a city match that goes with that. And so that's going to be covered by that. We are showing the trail as Batuminus. During the plan review, with the 90% plan review, a comment was made that that should be concrete. If that is upgraded to concrete, that would raise the city's cost by two, the up-cost would be the city's responsibility, and that would be $200,000. So I would like to know if the city would like to upgrade that to concrete, or if you want to keep that as Batuminus. And you can think about that and let me know, or whatever. The cost on the project overall is estimated at 17.2 million. The city of Fergus Falls estimate is approximately 800 to 900,000 dollars. Once we have a better cost estimate for the city utilities, we'll be able to hone that in. And the, some of the city utilities will qualify for reimbursement under the, because it's on interstate right-of-way. And utilities on interstate right-of-way qualify for reimbursement. And so if I back up to a slide that has. So the interstate right-of-way comes to, I can't remember if it comes to right before Redwood Lane. So when, I believe that when this was four-laned, the, we purchased additional right-of-way for the interstate, and it comes out, I guess it shows up on here, but it's really hard to see, this blue line, it might come to right here. So, but it doesn't go all the way to the right-of-way line over here. So that, once we have their design, we'll sit down with our CO people, and they'll come up with what qualifies and what does not qualify for reimbursement. So that will reduce this cost somewhat. And this cost estimate also does include the costs that are being covered by the TA funds. After the project is constructed, when the project is turned in, we will have a maintenance agreement with the city of Fergus Falls that will address both the cost and the maintenance following the project. The Mindot will be responsible for the driving lanes and the shoulder on Trunk Highway 210 and interstate ramps, just like we are today. We will be responsible for the bridge inspection and maintenance, maintenance of the culverts and non-maintenance, non-routine maintenance of the storm sewer, the signing on the Mindot roads and the stop signs on any local roads at junction with the highway, pavement markings on the highway, ramp lighting and 100% of the lighting for the roundabouts at the western ramps. The city of Fergus Falls is responsible for Redwood Lane and Lincoln Avenue, just as you are today, routine maintenance of the sidewalks and trails. Routine maintenance includes snow removal, sweeping, crack repair, and other minor items, signs and pavement markings on the local roadways, maintenance of the lighting, including the power cost and relamping at Redwood Lane Roundabout, the Lincoln Avenue leg of the eastern roundabout, the bridge lighting, and the lighting associated with Lincoln Avenue at the Western Avenue signalized intersection. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Your honor, I have a question. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it today. Two questions for you. One of them, I noticed on one of your screens, you had 60 miles per hour on the west side of the, I would call it the west roundabout going towards Wapperton. Are you going to have any changes in the speed limit that is 45 right now coming into those, those ramps, or is it going to stay at 45 or drop to 35? What are your thoughts?
At, at this time, we're not planning on making any changes. However, the fact that there are roundabouts here is going to slow the speed. So you're not going to be able to get up to 45 miles an hour between, say, this round, let me go to a different one, whoops. Oh, I guess they're on two different slides, anyway. You're not going to be able to get up to 45 miles an hour between the eastern ramps and the western ramps. Or, you know, probably between these two ramps either. And, you know. Trudy, I don't know if you want to chime in, you know, regarding doing a speed study after the project?
Yeah, we'd have to look at operating speeds once the project is complete, and we can certainly do that at that time.
So stay at 45 to start with?
Correct.
Okay. Next question I have for you is on the very eastern, northeastern part of the first roundabout. People are going to be coming into that two-lane, going into a one-lane. And it looks like there might be a little bit of a concrete median between making your choice to go on the on-ramp of I-94 and making your choice to go into the roundabout. Is that true? Is that, it shows on your one map there. Is that going to be a concrete curb in there? So they either got to make a choice if they're in that far right lane to go on the interstate, or they got to make a choice to get in that left lane for sure to get on the roundabout?
Are you referring to this little yellow, like half moon or quarter moon?
I, I can't see it right now, but once you show it.
Just one moment, we'll pull the picture up.
Yeah, so I'm talking in.
This little crescent, like, moon area right here?
If, if you're.
Laurie, we are not seeing your screen. We have your PowerPoint up on our screen, so we're trying to follow along. Your screen never did share.
Oh, okay. All right, well, if I stop sharing, I mean, if I exit out of my presentation, would I be able to see what you're seeing?
Probably not.
Okay, well, let me see, I'll figure, I'm on, I'm on one, the zoomed-in roundabout. Is that the slide you're looking at?
Which, which?
I'm going to go, I'm going to escape my presentation mode, and then I can tell you. I am on slide 15.
We have slide 15 up.
Yep.
Okay, so there is a little, like, crescent moon shape in the northeast quadrant?
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, just, just lateral to the pink. Right in the yellow, I'm, you're right on it, right in, right in there.
Oh, you can see my, you can see my cursor?
That's Lynn.
Okay. I'm showing it right of the pink.
Yes.
Okay, that is all level pavement. And we designed it that way specifically so that if someone was in the right lane and realized, oh, wait, I don't want to get on the interstate, that they would have the opportunity to try to merge into the other lane and go around the roundabout.
Sounds good, thank you.
So what you're seeing is only pavement markings, not concrete median?
Yes. The red is a raised concrete.
Could, could you cover why to go from, obviously, currently it's two bridges over the interstate, and we're going to one, one bridge? So what's the logic behind that?
Because two bridges are more expensive to construct, they're more expensive to maintain, not just the, the structure itself, but when you have two bridges, the, you know, like the winter maintenance and things, it's a little bit more expensive maintaining the pavement. And then the level of service just didn't warrant two bridges.
Your honor, when you say level of service, you mean the traffic? Going from two lanes, or four lanes to two lanes?
Yes, the, you know, we grade the level of service based on, like, how, how well traffic is flowing, if there's backups. And this will function at a level of service A, which is the highest level of service.
Other questions for Laurie?
Your honor, I have one. You mentioned some trees that would have to go, loss of trees on all of the different approaches, including the north alignment roundabout, which is what we're moving forward with. Does Mindot then identify other locations to offset that tree loss and put some trees back in where appropriate?
Not necessarily. We will evaluate this project the first winter to see if trees are needed for snow, blowing snow control. And if they are, we would look at putting them in as a separate project.
I'm not sure that.
But we don't currently do anything like, like wetland mitigation, where we, you know, take away a wetland and put one in somewhere else. At this time, we don't do that.
I'm not sure many of those are kind of like quality trees, are they? I mean, on, on that, currently, the trees that are there aren't necessarily the nicest trees, I don't think.
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions for Laurie? If not, you're going to send some documentation then regarding the, the options for upgrading from blacktop to concrete for the city to look at?
Sure, I can send you the difference in cost.
Right.
And you want that to go to Andrew?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Thank, no other questions, thank you, Laurie.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is railroad signal replacement project. And we will call upon Grant.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I think it's on. Okay. I'm just going to flash some reading.
It should work.
Okay, there we go. Now it's, now it's green, so. Yeah, Grant Cooper here to talk through the Otter Tail Valley Railroad Signal Replacement Project. Last time I was here was in January. Just wanted to give an update and then also request approval of plans and specifications and authorization to advertise for bid. So a bit of an update, since I last came to Committee of the Hole in January, we had a public input meeting on the 28th. From five to seven notifications were sent out through the Daily Journal, Facebook, interacted with the Chamber of Commerce to reach out to local businesses as well. And at that meeting here in Council Chambers, I just provided a project overview and then entertained questions. There was two members of the public that showed up, some general questions just about the crossings, and, and nothing significant or any significant opposition towards the project. So just, just wanted to give a brief update on that public input meeting. Additionally, I wanted to respond to some questions that were posed at the Committee of the Hole meeting that I was at on January 15th. First being asking if this could be a no-horn zone, or better known as a quiet zone in the railroad world. I have a kind of a long dissertation within the memo in your packet, just talking about what a quiet zone is. Essentially, it's enhancements to those crossings are required in order to make those a quiet zones. And so additionally, all four crossings would have to have enhancements put in place. You couldn't do one or two and not the other two. It has to be everything within a half-mile radius. And so there are, there are a variety of safety measures that can be installed, anything from four quadrant system, so gate arms at each quadrant, making sure that traffic from any direction couldn't cross the railroad. It could be through channelization devices, medians, et cetera. And so costs can range anywhere from 30,000 a crossing to a million dollars a crossing. It depends on the enhancements that are selected. For, just estimation purposes, when I was looking at this and did a high-level estimation, I would estimate anywhere from 50,000 to 300,000 per crossing would be required. Although Mindot's participating in the full cost for the signal replacement project and the enhancements to the roadways that are required, when I talked with them initially, they said we would not participate in enhancements to make this a quiet zone. So essentially, any, if you guys did want to pursue a quiet zone, that would be at the cost of the city to do those enhancements for the quiet zone. Based on the amount of trains that go through there, I'll leave it to you guys to see if it's worth the additional resources put towards that to make it a quiet zone. But just wanted to update you on, on that question. The second question that was posed was how many on-street parking spots would be lost if we pursued these, the layouts that I presented, which our Lynn has here as well and are in your packet. Summit would lose 24 spots, Mill would lose 12, and then Cascade and Freiburg would be minimal at one and no spots lost. So just wanted to follow up on that question. Finally, just wanted to give an update. This memo's dated a little bit. I was going to come in March, but I know you guys had some workshops, so we had to push this off until this first April meeting. Like I said, here today to seek authorization, or approval of plans, specifications, and authorization to bid. And so looking to have that at the next council meeting, bid opening at the end of April, the 29th, and then construction would be in the summer of 2025. With that, I'll open it up to any questions, comments you may have.
I think Councilmember Kwame had a question regarding parking.
Yeah, thanks, Grant. When we visited this at the open house, we talked about the parking and the potential loss of spaces. And I think the most important or the most significant piece of that puzzle is the parking on Summit Avenue. And I believe that losing 24 spots on Summit is too many. And so as you take a look at the final drawings and plans for this, my suggestion would be that we minimize that to whatever the smallest amount possible is. I know you need to have so much distance, you know, from the actual railroad, but we need to maintain as many parking spaces there as possible. So I would suggest that that be revised.
Yes, I can, uh, I can, specifically on the east side, or sorry, on the west side, uh, it's probably gonna be more challenging, it's, the biggest thing is because it's so skewed, that crossing and how it's at an angle, I think we can push it on the east side to gain some parking spots back, so yeah, all, we can certainly go back and minimize that parking loss, um, as well, so yep, we can do that.
Your honor?
Yep.
I, I would echo Councilmember Kwame's concerns, I think thirty-seven spots overall is too many for just this area in general, I, I have some concern on Mill as well, um, I, thirty-seven spots overall is a lot for, for this small area, and I think we need to look at some other options.
Okay.
I, I would question though, how many on Summit, on the west side of the rail, I don't think I've ever seen a car parked on that side of, of the road, very rarely, the only time is if there's probably a function on Lake Ellis, and, you know, now we've got the parking, and then I think on the s- south side of the road on Summit, there's very rarely a car parked there, it's that north kind of east corner where people tend to park on Summit.
Yep, and I, and like I said, I, I can, uh, uh, look to revise and, and squeeze that, uh, curb realignment as tight as I can to the railroad, like I said, maximizing the amount of parking that we can save.
I think, your honor, please, Paul.
Scott.
Just quick, uh, you know, the Federated Church, or whenever it's on Sunday services, it's packed, and then funerals, it's packed, and I was, a matter of fact, I was at a funeral a month, two months ago, and I parked right where, I can't park anymore, so it's, it's gonna impact something, so, um, I just wanna make sure that we, we understand that for the church.
Scott.
Grant, uh, answered Laurel's question, maybe you could talk about the cost share aspect of the parking on Mill Street that we discussed the other day, where that southern portion and the curving that goes all the way down to Kevore, and who pays for what, and why that might have been included in your scope.
So, as of right now, um, MINDOT is, so I think this might be running out of battery because it's going in.
Yeah, I don't think we're getting it on mic.
Um, MINDOT is, so what would happen is, post, post bidding, um, MINDOT, I would, I would start negotiations with MINDOT as to what the amount of cost they would cover for the project, um, depends how bids come in, and so prior to any sort of awarding of bids, I would come back to, we would make sure we'd have a cost agreement in place with MINDOT prior to doing that, like I said, they're, they're, so far, what they've said is they're anticipating covering the entire cost of the project, but it also depends on how bids come in, um, Mill Street especially has some very poor pavement conditions, and so that's why we pushed that as far, essentially covered that whole block, if you drive that street, there's a significant amount of, you'll see black lines all over the place from all the crack filling they've done, and so, um, one of the alternates that we are having with this bid is full pavement replacement of that, because I'm a, I'm concerned that if you only do a mill and overlay on that roadway, that within a few years, you're gonna see all those cracks reflecting back through, um, I did talk with Public Works last, uh, Friday morning, um, and they also wanted to see specifically on South Mill, uh, the curb, uh, pushed further north, um, uh, to accommodate, they said there is some concerns that, uh, with vehicles southbound on Mill, um, that, that's a pretty busy intersection once you get to Kevore, and making sure that vehicles had space to, uh, turn if they wanted to go westbound, and then the vehicles are, essentially accommodating more vehicles so they didn't get backed up, um, again, if, if there are concerns with parking, um, I can seek to minimize both on Mill and Summit to reduce the amount of parking loss overall, um, as much as possible, I'm hearing you loud and clear there.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, your honor, and I, I appreciate you looking at that with the parking spots, uh, I think one of the things that us as council members that, that we really have to answer to is that one on Summit where there's actually, um, taxpayers' homes, uh, where some of the parking's at, some of the other areas are just general city parking on Mill and the other side of Summit, like the, the mayor said, but we have to have an explanation to those, uh, homeowners or apartment complexes in that area to why we, we took that northeast corner of Summit and did that, and then, I, I might be naive here, or the question's never been, I think, said to me, what is the barrier of taking away the parking really look like, is it actually a barrier, or is it just a yellow marking on the line that comes out with, with diagonals that takes away that, that parking area, what is it like?
So what, uh, how the road narrows up, you're saying?
Yep.
So essentially, it's, it's new curb and gutter.
Okay.
Um, and then in some areas, it's kind of like on Summit, it'll just be turf behind the curb and gutter, and other areas like Mill, we're looking, on South Mill, we're looking at it like colored concrete, uh, boulevard in that area, so it depends, but yeah, essentially, it's gonna be new curb and gutter that would be in stuff.
All right, sounds good, thanks.
Is it required to be new curb and gutter, or can it be the yellow markings like, uh, Mike was referring to?
Um, I, I'm not sure on that, to be honest, um, I haven't asked that question, um, but I can, I can look into that.
Councilmember Layton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cooper, thank you, I appreciate this upfront information, so that we can all voice our concerns before it's too late, um, I'm looking at figure one, which is Summit, the very far west, there are a couple blocks, uh, rectangular images that are running north and south, what are those? Page here.
Okay, so that's, uh, that's a sidewalk crossing, so that's, that's currently installed there, um, that's a sidewalk crossing, that's, that we're just putting back exactly what was there before.
Okay, and the signal alarm is at the end of the point?
Correct.
When you indicate, I, I appreciate the, the importance of parking more than my product, my thoughts, is to narrowing that street, um, based on the traffic, uh, I understand Fergus Falls has a great deal of bike paths, but I know kids don't run on bike paths, uh, I would like to see that maintain its initial width as much as it can, um, parking is most important, but at the same time, uh, safety is too when you've got heavy traffic, uh, and bicycles on the same, same street, so, um, no, likewise on Mill, your, uh, figure two, I would say the same thing, um, I'm adverse to narrowing the road, uh, they narrowed the road by the Spees Park, and I've always said it takes as many steps for the duck to get across the road regardless if it's a sidewalk or a road, uh, I don't think we should lose that parking, um, why would they, why would it be designed to narrow the road? What's the initial thought?
So the narrowing of the road is specifically these, these new gate arms, or I should say, these new signals are, are gate arms, and they have a counterweight on the back, and then there's a gate arm that swings down, the counterweight on the back sticks out a certain amount, and so it's required that we narrow the road to accommodate, and, and the gate arm needs to be a s- a five, a minimum of five feet from the, uh, sidewalk, and so we had to create these, uh, essentially area, additional boulevard space in order to accommodate the gate arms, and there are required minimum distances that they are from the sidewalk and from the road, so that's, that's essentially why these curb bumpouts came to be, is to accommodate that new signal system.
I'm looking again at figure number two, we have the signal alarm locations on the north and south, um, if you get, I think that's the old depot there, uh, are you just attempting to pull the traffic together before the crossing? You've got an inter- you got the white car there, if you go south of that, could that not stay open the whole way?
On the southwest side?
Well, equal to where the white vehicle is in the parking lot.
Okay.
That whole portion of the road going south, does that need to be narrowed?
Um, that, that is an area that, like I said, we're, uh, we're looking to bring the curb bumpouts further north in order to, uh, add essentially kind of a, a, a turn lane without being called a turn lane, and so yes, we are planning to bring that further north, um, to accommodate that, that extra queuing, I'll call it, traffic queuing.
And figure three gets to be a little bit more complicated just because it's such a short area.
And that one has a, a, a bike lane existing on it, and so we are, as you can see, keeping that bike lane, um, and accommodating for that.
So the width of the road there, where Carlson chiropract it used to be, uh, is this a different kind of arm? How wide is that?
The, the actual-
Lincoln, Lincoln and?
Freiburg, Freiburg.
Yeah.
Fourth.
The fourth one, um, no, it'll be, uh, a gate arm that would cover that entire distance there, um, and we're bumping the sidewalk essentially to accommodate for that, like you say, the gate arm length there, so that's why we're just realigning the, the sidewalk there.
And Freiburg, yeah. So there's new cross arms at, on Freiburg and Lincoln? You replacing them?
Say again?
Are there ones there?
There are no gate arms at the Freiburg Crossing currently, it's just a, a, a signal with lights, and similar added to all four.
Correct, okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and, uh, look forward to a revision, thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess, thank you for looking at, I think minimizing the narrowing as much as possible and the parking, I think is a big deal for our community. Recognizing you can only do so much, but, but I think if, anything that we can minimize narrowing on and minimize the parking loss is, is important.
Yep, and, and like I said, I heard that loud and clear, I think, no matter what, any, I'll, I'll, like I said, I'll, my goal will be to shrink up to as close as we can to the crossings in order to maximize parking, um, anywhere that, no matter how wide, if we, so right now, someone, we're at a twenty-four foot width, two twelve-foot lanes, if I were to bump that out to a twenty-eight, they're still not gonna be able to do parking, it will make the road wider overall, um, and so I just wanted to make sure that you understood that part, um, so I guess, I guess, are there any other questions from council at all?
Well, I think, come and see, there's no action to take, if you're gonna come back with some revisions and?
Can I, I guess, can I request that plans are, uh, plans and specifications are approved, uh, with contingent upon revisions to the parking, or do you want me to come back and, and show you revised updates? I, I guess I'll ask that question.
I suppose the bigger question would be as if we, I would say come back with revised, let's be simplest.
Yep, that's fine, I just wanted to ask that question, so then, with that, it will probably push bidding back then, I can come to the next Committee of the Hole meeting, but just wanted to make you guys aware that, that we'll push our schedule back a little bit, um, I don't have immediate concerns with that, it's, relatively, it's a pretty small project, and so a contractor should be able to bid it in this summer, but, um, I wouldn't want to push it back any further, I guess, just to give the contractor the full summer to, to construct.
And, and, and if you can get them, if you can get the updated memo or plans out, then we can at least circulate them before a meeting, so people have got a chance to review them.
Certainly.
Right, thank you, Grant.
Yep, thank you.
With that, and we have, uh, an update from West Central Initiative, um, Rebecca and Greg.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, City Council, staff, and we also brought our EDD Advisory Board Chair Kurt Mortensen, who serves Ottertail County, soon to be joined by Councilmember Layton from the City of Fergus Falls, and another staff member Mallory Darby is in the audience, so, uh, good morning, everyone, so, you're the first of our city visits this year, uh, West Central Initiative serves nine counties and eighty-two communities, and, um, we tried to get out to all of, most of our communities, and we do make a visit to all of our counties, so, um, this is our trial run, so be kind to me, um, we are passing out some materials that I think will help you understand the work of West Central Initiative, inside the cover of the Current, which is our annual report, there's a list of all of the programs and services that we offer, um, you'll see a picture of Kurt Mortensen on the backside, that's where the list of all of our programs and services live, and then quickly I'll walk you through our annual report, but I also want to point out the check that's, uh, attached to the cover of your annual report, one of our coworkers, Rick Sharah, thought this would be, and I think it's ingenious, a great way to show cities as we visit you all, the investment that West Central Initiative has made back into your community over our, uh, first forty years, well, thirty-nine years of existence, and for Fergus Falls, it's been twenty million, nine hundred and fifty-nine, two hundred and ten, well, almost twenty-one million dollars, these are grants and loans that we've made to nonprofit sector for the purpose of granting, uh, education, churches, and then the lending that we do, it also includes some of the funds that are distributed from our component funds, and I'll tell you about that in just a minute, so as we walk through the annual report, the big colorful spread, uh, of West Central Minnesota, People, Planet and Prosperity is about the seventeen Rooms event that we had in Morris last summer, which is part of our strategic planning process around seventeen sustainable development goals, the next page talks about climate, and you're aware that we're doing some climate projects, our solar panel project that you've heard about, uh, the next page is on our Rural Democracy Program, last year we had eighteen rural leaders participate in a, uh, six-month program, uh, giving them, empowering them to run for leadership positions, either state, county, uh, school board, city townships or townships, our Rural Belonging Program, and I'm aware that the City of Fergus Falls, Claire, I think you're involved in this, is helping coordinate a lot of activity during our Rural Welcoming Week in September, that front page is one of the things that we did one year with our West Central Initiative group, the cover, uh, at Spees Park, and there's a lot of activity being planned for that in September, and then, um, in our Prosperity and Generosity team, we've got the Community Celebration, uh, on page twelve and thirteen, I'll let Greg talk about Economic Development on page fourteen and fifteen, our early childhood work, in every county, we have an early childhood coordinator, and they meet every month, and they work on early childhood initiatives across the region, our transportation planning, and I believe Fergus Falls could probably use a Safe Routes to School refresh, is that right, Mallory? So our Safe Routes to School program, which Mallory works on with Dwayne Hurley, and also our local food system, thriving communities powered by collective giving on page twenty and twenty-one, our Component Fund Program is a very robust program that exists throughout the nine-county region, uh, we have over two hundred funds that are held by West Central Initiative, these community funds, uh, are redistributed back into the community for projects, for scholarships, and then the next two pages, Inspiration, Inspiring Generations of Generosity, page twenty-two and twenty-three, uh, features the Nick and Katie Gano family, they've been giving every year to West Central Initiative, and then, how will you help your community, so, um, we love the partnership that we have with our individuals and our corporations, but also especially our cities and our counties, who contribute about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our operating support every year, th- at this time, we don't usually ask the city cons- to consider a gift, but we will follow up with a letter, probably during your budgeting process, typically, the City of Fergus Falls has contributed seven to eight thousand dollars a year, we hope that that's a good investment on your return on investment in the work that we do, and, um, yeah, I'll turn it over to Greg.
Thanks, Rebecca, uh, good morning, uh, members of the council, Mr. Mayor and staff, I'm Greg Wagner, Director, this is a really difficult mic. Greg Wagner, I'm the Director of Business and Economic Development with West Central Initiative, and in the sixteen years I have been with West Central and doing this, I think this is the earliest morning meeting, so, uh, as they say, the early bird gets the worm, so good on you guys for, uh, making all these, uh, heavy decisions so early in the morning, um, so, as Rebecca mentioned, uh, we do a lot, and, uh, we've hired a lot of new staff in recent years. So, as Rebecca mentioned, we do a lot, and we've hired a lot of new staff in recent years. And one of the best explanations some of those staff have arrived at about, like, how West Central Initiative functions, is we're essentially four different organizations under one trench code. So, that's kind of an easier way to understand that we do a lot. One of the components that we do is economic development, and we're a regional planning organization. So, we focus, as Rebecca had mentioned, on transportation planning, and we also have a designation from the Federal Economic Development Administration as an Economic Development District. So what that does is we do regional planning on a regional scale, which brings in potential resources from the federal and state government to help offset economic development projects led by cities. So think of industrial park expansions, bridge replacement, things like that that can align and bring in some federal support, because we do the economic development planning on a regional scale and develop a five-year plan. I won't go into too depth about that today. I know this meeting's probably run a little long. So, one of the things I did want to talk about is Rebecca had mentioned with that check, $21 million in investment over our 39-plus years of existence in Fergus Falls. One of the most visible mechanisms of our economic development work is our loan program and our lending. So, that lending includes primarily two components, small microloans to typically startups or businesses that need just a small amount of cash to do an expansion, add equipment or what have you. Or we partner with banks on gap loans, where the bank isn't able to lend the full amount of funds to a project, but they want to lend. So we get contacted either by the bank or the borrower to consider that a portion of the loan. That helps mitigate some of the bank's risk, helps them stay in alignment with their loan requirements as well. So, in Fergus Falls right now, we have 36 active loans. We've had kind of a quieter period in this last nine months, as I think the, kind of, if you talk to many lenders, it's been pretty quiet. Interest rates are affecting that, costs of goods are affecting that. But the recent activity we've had, three loans have been to the city of Fergus Falls businesses. So, that's a very, pretty good component of that. One of the other things we do as a kind of a trusted organization is we help deliver programs for the state of Minnesota. So, during COVID, we were the administrator of COVID relief grants to businesses. So we got across the region over the course of that pandemic period, plus a few years after, over $6 million out to businesses in the form of kind of supportive operating grants that help keep their doors open. And more recently, the state of Minnesota created the Promise Act Program, which is a component of loans and grants. We've issued the grants for round one last year, and there were a total of 52 loans, or excuse me, 52 grants that were delivered across the region. It was a very competitive program, 451 applications. We were able to fund 52 of those with the 1.15 million we received from the state. We had 10 applications that were successfully funded in Fergus Falls. So that equated to $170,000. Last summer, that went directly to businesses in Fergus Falls. So, we're currently trying to make some legislative changes to the Promise Act Loan Program. One of the main reasons for that is that loan is agreed, and interest rate is 3%, but the state led, the law that they created mandated a 10-year loan term on that. So, if you're going to fund real estate improvements with a loan, typically you 20 years, and sometimes that 10-year difference is a major cash flow impact on a business's ability to pay for its expenses and debt. So, we're working with the state legislature to make that adjustment right now. That's a really quick snapshot of the work that we do. I would pause for any questions that you have for myself or Rebecca on our work. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Rebecca or Greg?
Your Honor, I just have a quick question. I know we're behind on our time a little bit, and I appreciate you being here, Greg and Rebecca. Did, do you, you're going around every city? Did, did you request to come to the city here, or did the city request you? How's the process going with other communities to get you here today?
Yeah, it's kind of, we work with the staff to, to request a spot on, on the agenda. And typically, traditionally, it was a requirement of our Economic Development District duties to at least visit the nine counties.
Okay.
And we've expanded that to the cities, providing an update. We wanted to make ourselves more visible and help, especially as councils transition and new members come up to become familiar with the resources and the opportunities that we can work with communities on.
Good, I appreciate that. So you guys asked us to do it, because one of the forefronts of what's going on with our council and our city right now is economic development. I mean, this is big, I'm sure you live in the community in the area, and you've heard that. So, I want to know from you, what do you provide the city of Fergus Falls for economic development, so we know? It sounds like it's a financial basis that you have, a banking-type basis. Is there anything where you go out and acquire businesses? Is there anything where you help startups? Is there anything where, where you're walking a business down the road, or is it mainly finance that we can look to you as a city for?
Yeah, we primarily do financing of small businesses. Like, there is some extent, when we get a startup come in and say, hey, we need some loan dollars, we'll review the business plan, provide some critiques on that, and some, you know, feedback on how they can improve things or adjust their projections to be a little more realistic. Typically, how, what we do is we rely on other partners. Like, I was here at the first council work session on economic development when Ian Carlstrom was here from the Small Business Development Center. We rely heavily on their resources and their technical assistance. They have consultants that help kind of walk that business through the startup process, and then they get referred to us for the financing. So that's one component, and our most visible component of economic development. But also, we work with city staff on identifying funding through the state or federal government on projects to help offset some of the load and the local cost that a city provides. We do not acquire property or hold property, if at all possible. One of the reasons is, you know, a nonprofit owning a lot of property in a community, that impacts the tax base, so, but we do help fund for-profit businesses or even nonprofits to, to acquire property. And then the other biggest component is just kind of advising as requested by city staff on economic development. Hey, we convene a group of economic development professionals across the nine-county region to kind of share problems and projects and challenges and resources. So it's mainly resource sharing and putting opportunities in front of city staff or having staff come to us.
Just, just to clarify, I don't think there's been a year that I've been on council or mayor that West Central Initiative has not presented to the council so annually, and, and more times in between. So, they're not strangers to come into city hall by any means. And, you know, in general, I know, you know, from being on the Business Development Board loan programs of the city, we've worked with West Central Initiative on a number of collaboration loans where it's been gap financing to make a project happen as well. So that's, we've, we've had a longstanding relationship with West Central from an economic loan program perspective. So, with that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And we will move on. The next item on the agenda is a code and fee schedule updates from Clara.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few different requests that I've put together in one memo for you to review this morning and then hopefully move forward for action on Monday. First up is amending sign ordinance to allow pylon signs in the B2 and B3 zones. Currently, in both our current sign ordinance and in language that's been put together for a sign ordinance update that's more broad, pylon signs, which are the kind that have, imagine like the old Shopko sign, it's a very tall, large sign that generally has footings. We call those out specifically as a use in the B5, B6 zones, but not in any of our business zones underneath that, so in our B2, B3 zones. However, there are properties in our B2 and B3 zones where a sign of that size does make sense, and in this case, has been requested by a couple different businesses. Since we don't have that in our sign code currently, I don't have a good way to allow them to put those signs up for their businesses, including the use of a pylon sign as a B, in the B2, B3 zone as a conditional use permit, would give them an avenue to be able to request that for their businesses. It also adds a layer of review that the city can then do to ensure that it's fitting aesthetically with the area that it's in, that it's not interfering in any sightlines, et cetera. So that's that first request for conditional use permit. Maybe I'll pause for questions on that one.
Any questions on that? Mike?
I'm going to abstain from the vote. I own a sign company in the city, but do you have, Clara, the true definition of what a pylon sign is? Is it an actual two-pole sign or a monopole? Do you, because there's a difference between the two, and I don't want people to get messed up with that.
We do have a definition of pylon sign that we've included that will be added to our sign code. It's not currently in there, but the pylon sign that, the kind that we typically deal with in the city that we refer to as a pylon is a one-pole sign, not two poles. So we have a separate, I think maybe you're also thinking of billboards. No.
Nope. If you took like some, you know, some sign was two, two posts with a sign on top.
Yeah, I, I don't have the definition in front of me. We do have one that we work with.
Would the, Your Honor, would the intent of this, the conditional use permit for pylon signs include pylon, can we make that definition? I would assume that's not adopted yet from my time on Planning Commission. Can we make that to include what Mr. Mortensen is referring to?
Yeah, it doesn't already cover that, sure.
If it's not already covered.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions of Clara?
Your Honor, do we have any existing pylon signs that are, have just kind of happened or in these districts already? Can we touch on that so the council's aware of that?
Yeah, so, current, the one that comes to mind currently is BMO Bank. They have a pylon sign, but technically they are a B3 zone. It is possible, and my, what I think maybe happened in the past, because there has also been a pylon sign at the old Shopko site, I'm wondering if it was at some point a different zoning designation maybe of a B5, at least the Shopko site in particular that maybe allowed it, but I don't really know, just sometimes stuff just happened without any paper trail.
Your Honor, if I can assist, I think, I don't know if there was ever a true definition of a pylon sign. They're all over the city. They're all over in B2, B3 right now. You take Applebee's as a pylon sign, you take the old Bank of the West as a pylon sign, you take, they're all over the city right now. So I think my suggestion would be is to get really true what a pylon sign in, in the sign world, that I'll speak and I don't do them, they're usually a two, two-pole sign, that's a pylon sign. A single pole is a monopole structure, and, and they're different. And so, I would, I would clarify that, because what's going to happen is someone's going to come and say, yeah, I can put up a pylon sign. It's going to be huge, two-pole, and I know they got to go through the conditional use process, but they're going to see them all over the city and say, hey, Applebee's has it, Bank of the West has it, everybody has it. So, I, I just, as advice to the city as a sign guy, I'm not trying to do anything other than that. I think it, it needs to be cleared up just a little bit. I can assist with that in any way or other people, but I'm just concerned for the city staff down the road.
Sure, thank you.
So, the ask at the moment is obviously to amend the ordinance, and that ordinance would come back to council for approval?
Yeah, I'm going to see what I can do between today and Monday to hopefully get some language in place, because we do have two requests currently for pylon signs in zones that I just, I can't, I don't have an avenue for currently. And maybe I'm just reading the code a lot more thoroughly than used to be done, but if I don't have a legal backing for what I'm allowing, I just don't feel comfortable doing it. So, I will see what I can do before Monday.
Where are we at with bringing the actual sign updates back to this body to get that done, done?
The context and the language has all been approved by Planning Commission. What we are still working on is the actual formatting of the chapter, and that's just not something I've been able to prioritize.
Right. So is that something in the next couple of months we should be able to get through at some point? Or through the summer or at some point?
Through the summer, I would hope, yeah. I, I might need some, I might need to find another human that can help me with it. So, yeah. Okay, so I will work on that for Monday. Then the next.
Do we want a motion then to bring that to council on Monday?
Yes.
I'll like that.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Obviously, we'll probably leave it on the normal agenda if there's going to be an amendment to language. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All those against, same sign. Mr. Mortensen abstained. The motion is approved. So it will come to council, but not on the consent agenda.
Sounds good.
Your next item.
Next request is to repeal Chapter 120, Tetrahydrocannabinol Product Sales. So with changes in state rules and state laws, Chapter 120 that we adopted back in 2022 is no longer relevant, and in fact includes prohibitions in there that we can no longer prohibit under state law. So, the request would be simply repeal Chapter 120. All of the, the new rules and regulations that the city needs to follow to account for changes in the state laws are all now in Chapter 121. So, Chapter 120, that repeal would have no effect on our Chapter 121.
I would offer that motion.
A second.
Make it, was it Scott? Any discussion? With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Any none, the motion is approved. Good for that to go on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Consent agenda it will be.
Okay.
The next item is the update of the fee schedule.
Yep, this goes a little bit along with our Chapter 121. We are allowed to include in our fees, fee schedule a fee for cannabis events, which is a separate license that is, that goes through the state to be able to host cannabis events. So this simply would be to allow those events in the city, and we are allowed to put a fee on that, and staff is recommending a $25 a day fee that would be the same as our, as our liquor fee.
Any questions regarding that? Somebody care to make the motion?
Your Honor, I have a couple of questions regarding it. Clara, do we have to, do we have to do this legally? I know Rolf isn't here today. Do we have to give a temporary cannabis event license permit by the law?
Um, yes, we do have to allow events to occur.
In, by the law. Can you tell me in Section 21.16, where it says, "An applicant is for a retail registration shall fill out an application form," and "Applicant for a retail registration shall fill out an application form as provided by the city." I don't understand that language, I guess.
Okay.
It's under Section 121.16.3, Application and Submittal Review.
Yep, so this $25 fee would be the registration fee. They'd be applying, that, so what we do currently, maybe Lynn, you can speak a little bit more for, for events where liquor is going to be sold, they go through a very similar process. They submit an application to the administrator's office and pay a fee.
Okay.
And we submit it to the state for their final approval.
Yep.
So it would be the same thing. $25 fee would basically be our time to give it to the state for final approval.
In this case, though, I'm sorry.
Well, I think the question that he's asking is, you know, not anybody can apply for that. They have to be a retail license.
Oh, yes, correct. Yep, sorry, that's what I meant when I said that they, they get a license from the state to be able to host events, and then they come to the city once they have that license in place, and then they can apply for an event in town.
Which is separate than our retail licenses that we have in the city.
Correct.
So they're, they're coming from somewhere else with a license, then coming to us. Okay.
Correct.
The, the other question I have then is this has to be held on private property? So this is not a public property area, so it has to be owned by a private entity to have this, this on? So this can't be at the Big Wood Event Center, that's a public place, right? This can't be held at a public parking lot of the cities, it can't be anything like that. So the question is then, why do we, in this city, why do we have a $250 foot, or 250-foot minimum buffer between our retailers, but on this one, we put in the foot minimum buffer between our retailers, but on this one, we put in the state 500 and 1,000? Why is that wordage of 500 and 1,000 from residential schools, parks in this, in this wordage that's different than our 250?
I will maybe rely on people who are on the committee.
I think, well, I don't have a great answer, but I think the thought behind it was that with the retail stores, there's controls in place to ensure, you know, some of those activities are secure and yada, yada. I think the, the police department had some concerns that if we have an event of this nature where people are transient and they're using substances, whatever, there's really limited controls on boundaries of that event or activities of that event, the flow of product in and out of that event, and just having the ability to keep that uncontrolled activity further away was important to the, to the police department.
Okay, so what this would do is based off of those footages, you take our retailers that we have now, they would not be allowed to hold an event right at their facilities because they are under the 500 and under the 1,000 if they were, right?
That is correct. They would also have to have a separate license for the events, and as far as I know, we don't have any local entities who are seeking that license.
Okay, good, thanks.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, thank you. Let's go back to the first definition. What is an event? This cannabis event, what, what is it? What could it be?
Well, I think like a festival or, I mean, imagine, okay, what's an example of, of an event in Fergus Falls that uses a liquor license? Shop Moving Groove? Shop Moving Groove would be an example of an event.
And where's that held?
Well, typically, they've held it either downtown on Lincoln Avenue or in Speace Pavilion.
So this cannabis event could not be handled there, right?
That's correct.
I'm trying to figure out what this event is. I mean, if I had a bunch of hoodies coming home, I'd just have it a, I'd have it in my backyard and I'm not even going to come to the city. I'm trying to figure out what this is.
I think you're maybe referring to just a party. This would be, this would be like an event where you maybe have vendors, so cannabis vendors who are there to share their wares in some sort of a festival.
Where would it be handled? Where would, where would this be held?
Well, let's take, let's imagine that somebody has a field that they own that's maybe on the edge of town. It's still within city limits, but it doesn't have any school nearby, anything that would prevent them from doing it, they could hold an event there.
So, I mean, private land, so the Kmart building would be a good example.
With the approval of the landowner.
It's very rarely going to happen.
I think we kind of talked about a little bit.
Well, the racetrack would be one place.
Exactly, I was going to say the racetrack or Fleet Farm or Walmart or K, Kmart or the Moore Ford Park and all that right there, it's all private, so that's where it would be at, if it was.
And if the zoning works.
I'm in a different world, thank you.
So with that, I mean, basically, we're obligated, you know, the state of Minnesota, it's not a, it's, I mean, all we, all we can do is manage it. And, and there's an element of staff time involved in processing paperwork, and that's basically what the fee is to cover the staff time.
I would like to see the fee higher than.
That's, that would be the prerogative of the council.
What did you say, Mark?
He wants it higher.
Oh, yeah.
Is there, in regards to that, I'm not sure I'm at the same place, but is there more time involved with policing because of a cannabis-based event versus an alcohol-based event?
I can't.
We don't know, because we.
They haven't had any, right?
In this cannabis committee, we had, I'll just, Your Honor, if you say, we discussed a lot of this through everything, and we, nobody on that committee really wanted to have cannabis in town, and so we had to follow the rules of the state. And so this is all wide open learning for all of us. Nobody, none of us are experts on it, I don't believe. I, I was totally against it completely, and then they find out you have to have this. And I agree, if you want to raise it, I agree 100% to do whatever we can do to get more out of it, because it's going to cause something down the road, I'm sure, so.
100% it'll be 250?
More Al.
Just one other comment.
I think we need a motion on the floor, because we're having a lot of discussion here. So I will make the motion.
Thank you, Jim.
To put it on the agenda.
Add, add $25.
$25.
That seems awful low, but.
I mean, we can always, somebody can always.
We can always raise that, so.
Would somebody care to second Jim's motion?
Yes, 25.
So is somebody going to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott.
Now we can have discussion.
So Al.
We have had a cannabis event, it was at Speace Park, and what was that, last year or a year and a half ago? There was, there was something down there. There was an event there.
THC.
It was THC.
It's not the same.
Okay.
So THC is allowed on public property and cannabis is not?
Is that how it reads?
Is that how it works?
I think we're splitting hairs there, kids.
They weren't supposed to consume.
Yeah, there was no consumption at that event. I think it was strictly vendors showing wares. So that, that would be the difference is it is a cannabis event that would be licensed by the state would have an element of consumption.
Lot of definitions that need to be verified.
I agree with Mr. Rachel's. I'm too old to be in this world of, of cannabis. I don't, I, in, in Mr. Fish, I don't believe $25 even representative of, of the staff time to, to manage this as well as our police department. So I understand we have to be part, we have to do this because of state statute, but I'm not in favor of the $25.
You can, you can ask to make an amendment and change the value if you so wish to.
Well, I look at the conditional permit on a housing project or some yard, that's I would like to see the amendment to this to go to 350.
And now you have to ask Mr. Fish and Mr. Rachel's if they would be willing to amend their motion.
Would you like to amend your motion in the amount?
To the amount of $350.
Absolutely.
That's fine, per day.
So we have agreement on that?
This is a per day.
Per day, yeah, per day. Yep, up to four days max, is all it reads.
So. Your Honor, I wish Rolf was here. Is there a, and Clara, maybe, do you know, is there a cap or do they have any suggestions? Because every time we seem to want to do something, they tell us we can't.
I would have to look back at the, there are caps for all other fees. Off the top of my head, I don't remember if or what the caps would be for events.
Okay, then I'll leave it alone.
Is the conditional use permit fee associated with cost outlay that we have for publishing?
100% tied to that.
Do you know how much that roughly runs of that 350 fee that we charge that Mr. Laitner referred to?
Nearly all of it, including the mailing.
Okay.
We don't.
They're two different things.
We're not paying for staff.
They're two different things.
They're different, right. I was just curious when that was referenced. I think a lot of that's.
We, we have a motion on the floor to offer a temporary cannabis event registration at $350 per day, up to a maximum of four days. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Amended motion.
Amended motion.
Aye.
Now we have, now we have to vote on the motion.
Right.
You're good, you're good.
Isn't that correct?
I think you're good, as long as you didn't previously vote on the motion in both quarters.
Okay, all right, fine, thank you.
So basically, it's $350 per day to a maximum of four days. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign.
Would I go to the consent?
The motion is approved, can that go to a consent agenda?
Your Honor, I'd like it not to be on the consent agenda. One of the things we were lacking today was legal representation to clear things up. I want to make sure Rolf gets his chance to look at this and talk about it on Monday.
I agree.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing is we need to verify we're not above a state maximum.
Right. The next item on the agenda is landfill demolition cell. Call upon Andrew.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. I'll try to make up a little bit of time here for us. I do want to just give a quick nod to Dan Edwards and Troy and other folks in our engineering department with the major assist on these items today. As you all know in the room here, we operate a city-owned landfill, and that landfill includes both closed and active PCA permits. And as part of holding those permits, we have to file annual reports, but we also have to do periodic groundwater and methane gas monitoring and testing. And historically, we have partnered with Houston Engineering to provide the necessary professional support to meet the responsibilities under these MPCA permits. That relationship has been very successful. This is a very specialized field, and Houston Engineering is very good at what they do. So with that, city staff is recommending that we approve the annual services agreement at an estimated cost of $99,772. The funding for this activity comes from the refuse fund, but also the city has a financial assurance fund, which is under our closed permit, 187, which we're required to put money aside to fund these monitoring and testing activities on an annual basis. So that's the request today to approve this professional services agreement with Houston Engineering. The agreement is within your packet. If there's any questions, happy to ask or try to answer those.
Any questions, Andrew? Straight forward.
Yeah, Andrew, I just want to say again, are we the only one in the county that has this type of a demo cell for people to bring stuff in?
We're the only one in the state.
We're the only one in the state, only one in the county, and we don't receive any county funds for this at this time, do we, to assist us?
I'll defer to Bill on fundraising.
No, it's funded through the user charges. Now, there are other demolition cells in the county. We are the only, under the new lined cell, so, but there are other demolition cells.
So there's a chance that as time goes by, we may be the only one left standing if they don't comply to come up to standards that we're at? Is that true?
Correct. If, if others didn't come up to MPCA standards, as time passes, when their permits expired, yeah, theoretically, that could happen.
So it would be an important thing to the county to, to make sure that we're, we're still going for residents of this county at some time. Thank you.
If somebody can make a motion? Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laurel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved. Are we good for that to be on the consent agenda?
I would think so.
Thank you, consent agenda, it is. The next item is the 2025 Millen Overlay Seal Co. Projects.
We got a few more landfill ones.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'll just keep rolling if you, I'll try to make up time here. So this is kind of in line with Councilmember Mortensen's comments. We do have a Class 1 demolition disposal site, which is currently Cell 3A, and that's expected to reach capacity this year. So we've been working on expansion and into Cell 3B. Real convenient naming there, 3A and 3B. We moved plans and specs forward in January, or last year, and in January of this year, we moved to the bidding phase. We currently had a bid opening, or excuse me, we recently had a bid opening where we saw 11 bidders. The few bid openings that we've had this year, we've seen a high number of bids and really favorable bids, so good news there, knock on wood. But the apparent low bidder was Central Specialties. Their total bid amount was $492,660.25. You can compare that to the engineer's estimate, which was just shy of $710,000, so really favorable pricing. Staff in Houston Engineering have evaluated the bids, conducted the post-bid interview, and we've deemed Central Specialties' bid to be in order in responsive to the bid letting. Demolition disposal rates were increased in January of this year, as you all may recall, to fund these demo cell improvements. The rate increase was approved by the city council after evaluating the estimated 3B construction costs. What we anticipate doing is obviously leaving those rates in place, but we may not have to raise them as aggressively in the years ahead because of that favorable pricing that we had on this bid opening. So the request today is to move forward to the council, awarding the construction contract to Central Specialties in the amount of $492,660.25. And the bid tab with all 11 bidders is included in your packet as well. You can kind of see the disparity of bids.
Your Honor, a question?
Do we have a motion?
A motion, I can make a motion.
Thank you, Laurel.
I have a question.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott.
Can we discuss?
Yep. I think Laurel had a question.
Um, no problem. Do we have to leave those costs the same? I get that that's going to minimize increases in the future, but I mean, if we're looking at over a $200,000 estimated savings, can we pass that on to our citizens now and look at the rate increases as needed, or is that not prudent?
We can look at it. I spent a little time, let me come up, sorry. So we could look at that, and I did a little evaluation of that last night. So, I mean, they're already in place, so we would have to evaluate, yeah, is, is that a smart move to drop them back down to raise them again later? So we can look at that. The good news is, these are favorable bids, so at least we have that option of talking about that. Let me think on that a little bit, do a little analysis. That's something you wouldn't have to act on on Monday. I mean, you can approve this. What is the council's wishes? Would you like to talk about that at a future committee of the whole?
Well, quick question for you, Bill. When you were, when we had looked at this and we were putting that long-range plan in, each year, it wasn't an exact like percentage, was it, as far as what the increase was going to look like?
Let me grab what I went through.
I thought it was a little bit different each year.
Yeah, it's not the same percentage. Because I pulled out what we reviewed in November. So we went through this in November as we were presenting the budget, and for instance, we were going from, so we went from 3340 to 4740, so a sizable jump in demolition rates. Again, those people that go use the demolition cell are the ones paying that rate, so when it comes in. So we bumped up to 4740. We were projecting that it would stay at 4740 until 2029, then we'd go up another 12.7% to 5340. It would stay there until 2032, then we'd go up another 9.4 to 5840. So that's what we're looking at back in November. And now, I took a half hour late yesterday to say, okay, what would this look like? So we're at 4740, then in 2029, we'd go up 8.4 to 5140 instead of 5340, so a little bit less, and that would hold, and then we'd get to 5340 in 2032. So you can see, we were up here, you know, so we're doing the same curve, just bringing it down a little bit over that time. So I want to look at our cash balances and how comfortable are we, because again, this is, you know, we're taking these larger increases now because the cost for expansion went up so much over what we originally thought it would be over the life of this. So it, it is expensive, having that lined cell, certainly. I don't know if that answers your question or muddies it more. Something we're not going to decide today. I mean, it's something we'd have to talk through.
I mean, at this point in time, the, the directive is regarding actually the cell expansion, so this, the discussion about fees is a separate discussion. So I think, are there any specific questions on the actual contract amount?
Your Honor, I do appreciate Bill's time and energy in this.
We're coming back to the demo cell, so not, not the discussion on fees, so any discussions on the cell itself?
Well, yeah, since you kind of opened it up with the county, and we have two commissioners here sitting in the audience today, and this is a perfect opportunity to visit about this. You know, when, I know that roundabout vote came in by the.
We're not talking about the roundabout.
No, I know.
Talking about the demo cell.
But about the YMCA out there, we were asked to contribute some money to that, and that was a county project, which I believe was $750,000 for that. That could have been used at other projects, like Cleveland, now that's coming up. And now we are at a position where, you know, we are the only city that has this.
The county just, the county controls waste by, by statutes, so if you're asking the county for money, all they're going to do is charge it back again.
I'm just kind of curious how, how that can work. I mean, we're, if we're the only one that has this type of a cell, I don't know how that works.
So this is a good question you bring up, and over the last, I'd say, two years, maybe even four years. maybe even four years, city staff has worked with the county. We did come to the council at one time and say, authorize us to talk with the county about the future of solid waste in the county. So over the last, again, two to four years, we've talked about what does regionalization look like in the future? Because we are the only one with a lined cell, permits will be expiring for both private landfills and other governmental landfills. So we've been in those discussions with the county in the, you know, in the past couple of years on what would it look like to start brainstorming, you know? Their permit is not expiring yet at the county for over in, it's at Henning, right, is the, where the demo is. So that's not expiring yet, but it will in the future. So that discussion has happened and will happen more because Fergus could be a, a good hub, and, you know, maybe it looks different, even the ownership of it or the structure of it. Is it a, a multi-county joint powers that, you know, example of something we talked about, because we would be a destination for regional ways. Now, that changes the useful life of our cell. You know, we're thinking, we probably have expansion for 60 to 70 years out there. If we expand that, yeah, it gets shorter, but, so, those are some of what we've talked about.
Thanks.
Yep.
Your Honor, just one thing I'd clarify, Al. The money that we spent on the roundabout was, we got a grant from the state, so we couldn't use that money on Cleveland.
Yes, we could. I asked that question at that point. I don't.
We're not talking about.
Anyway, I just wanted.
But I wanted to clarify that too before we had some misunderstandings.
I, I actually, I think you have that mistake, and we, when we put the cash in, we could have, but then we replaced that cash with a grant, so that cash is actually going to other projects.
Well, you're right, but with that, that could have went towards the Cleveland one too, because it had this qualification from the state.
It is going towards.
Right, it is now, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Right, that's, yeah, I was gonna say, I believe we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the central specialist contract, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. The motion is approved. Good on the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, we'll put it on the consent agenda. Then third item on the demo cell.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, members. This is in relation to the bid that was just moved forward. We received three quotes for the material testing services, and the low quote that we received was from Veteran Testing and Inspecting LLC in the amount of $9,965. We also received quotes from Terricon and Braun InterTech, and these costs are included in the overall construction project budget that we just talked about. So the recommendation is to approve the material testing services contract to Veteran Testing and Inspecting LLC in the amount of $9,965.
I'll make that one. I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Laurel. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion is approved. We good on the consent agenda? Thank you. The next item finally is the Millen overlay and Sealco projects.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. Our engineering staff has been evaluating local street candidates for overlay and Sealco applications. As you all know, these are really our two maintenance-type, preventative maintenance-type strategies that we deploy throughout the city. And anywhere we do a Millen overlay project, we are required to get pedestrian ramps in that area up to ADA standard. So just always important to note that. It becomes a little bigger than just the street surface itself. Staff has been evaluating these candidates, and they're looking at Ward 4 as the Millen overlay ward for the year. We have a policy that we shift from one ward to the next on an annual basis. Potential segments that they have identified include West Side Drive, Parkview, Melody Lane, Meadow Hill Lane, and then looking at other candidates as well in Ward 4, which solely depends on the availability of funding. Potential Sealco candidates for this year are Summit Avenue, Cora Avenue, and then again, we look at adding additional streets as budgets allow. We did budget $335,200 this year for Millen overlays and $178,300 for Sealco applications. That has to encompass the entirety of the project, including engineering costs and contingencies. And so ultimately, what happens on an annual basis is staff identifies and matches projects to that budget as bids come in. We have some flexibility to add segments if bids are favorable. So the action that we're looking for from the council at this point in time, moving this forward to Monday night, is to initiate public improvement number 5381, which is the 2025 Millen overlay improvement project, and then ordering the plans and specs for that public improvement, and then also initiating public improvement 5382, which is the 2025 Sealco improvement project, and ordering the plans and specs for that public improvement as well.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laurel. Laura. Any questions?
Comment?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign.
No, I think Scott had a question.
Oh, Scott.
I just thought, wanted to make the comment that people might look at this list and see roads like West Side Drive or Meadow Hill Lane as being maybe in better condition than, for example, West Vernon or West Bassett Avenue, and wonder why those wouldn't be on the list for repair. And as we've discussed this in the past with engineering, those streets obviously need repair, but they need more than a Sealco, and they need more than a Millen overlay. They're going to need full reconstruction when that day comes. So this work would be a considered maintenance of something that's going to extend the life and be a good thing for these areas and a good use of the funding at this time.
Yeah. Thank you, Scott. It's preventative maintenance rather than reconstruction. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's a double aye.
It's a double aye.
Is it too late? Aye.
Thank you, Mark. Right, the next item on the agenda, it's getting long and I need a coffee.
We all do.
The next item is.
Are you bringing lunch in?
Is the interstate engineering design agreement for Lincoln Avenue, alley and parking lots. We call upon Andrew to discuss that.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. This is my last item, so.
Temporary engineer.
Getting close, yeah. As you guys heard a few months ago, maybe even just a month ago from Otterdale Power, they're looking at doing that fairly significant utility project in the alleyways north of Lincoln Avenue on the backside of the buildings. The span of that project is from Union Avenue to Cascade Avenue, and with that alleyway being torn up, staff has kind of taken a bigger look as to whether or not it makes sense to do a project in that area, certainly in relation to the alley and the reconstruction of the alley, but wanting to evaluate what makes sense to address some of the needs in that area. And what we've been talking about is a reconstruction of the alleyway. We have some existing stormwater issues in that area. We want to address those at the same time as we're doing that invasive work. We have done some preliminary cambering of the storm sewer lines in that area, and the camera actually got stuck or blocked, so certainly there's some needs that have to happen, right, in the immediate future in that area. Knowing that the parking lots in that immediate area are also in tougher shape, we looked at what, what could potentially happen with those. And if you look at the map here, what we're kind of, at a preliminary level suggesting is that the, the center parking lot, the one right in the middle of that project area, is a good candidate for reconstruction, to the point that Scott just made. Once they're beyond a certain state of disrepair, putting a new surface on them is really a waste of money in the sense that the base is, is bad and it's going to end up in the same result sooner. We also evaluated, I should say, interstate engineering and our city staff, have evaluated the other two city-owned parking lots on the east and west side of that center lot, and those are better candidates for Millen overlay projects, so resurfacing. They're not as, in as tough a shape. And then I'll, I'll note, just north of Dick Pickett CPA firm, there's a little square parking lot area that's gravel. We're also looking at paving that parking lot as part of this project and cleaning that up. So looking at all of these things, we've started to talk about potential costs and funding sources, and we're prepared to put a full funding plan together if this proceeds. The next step in this process to move this forward is to initiate this PI. It's PI 5855, which we're calling the Lincoln Avenue Alleyway and Parking Lot Improvement Project. And then interstate engineering has submitted a professional services proposal in a not-to-exceed amount of $74,900, which gets us through the design and bidding phase of things. The timeline that's been out, that's been outlined within that proposal is that by the end of May, plans and specs will be ready, and we can move towards the bid process with the anticipation that this project is complete in this 2025 building season.
Your Honor, I would.
I'm sorry, one more thing that I want to mention. The thought process behind doing all this at once, a couple of things. One, we understand that this disrupt, this is a disruption to our downtown businesses, and rather than go over three building seasons, it's, you know, those kind of rip the Band-Aid things off and get it done. Two, when you bid in scale, you see better pricing. We've seen good pricing this year, like I mentioned, and so we want to see if we can take advantage of that. And then three, the utility partners that are going to disrupt the alleyway are going to pay a damage assessment for the work that they're going to do tearing up that alley, and having those funds to apply towards this project make it much more attainable. So that's why the timing is good, and we're talking about this now.
Your Honor, I would offer this motion, and I also have a question.
Thank you, Laurel. Do we have a second? Thank you, Scott.
Question. Is there any sense in looking at the layout of these parking lots to make sure we are maximizing as many parking spots as we can get when we're doing this, to make sure they shouldn't be reconfigured in any way? We have a parking issue in town, and it would be logical to make sure if we're doing this, that we're doing this in a way that we, because I know we're going to lose some in the alley reconstruction for the utilities too, that we make sure we get as much parking as we can.
Alex, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. Yes, we will absolutely include that as, as part of the design. They have, they'll have to get restripe anyway, so we will analyze what maximizes the number of spots in each location.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions, Al?
Andrew, just, I agree, I agree with this. Something's got to be done back there. The current engineering staff, you know, I know they've looked at this stuff. What's, are they comfortable with how everything is coming out, and there any recommendations from the basement, I'll, I'll say?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Kremeyer, Troy has been in every meeting we've had about this topic, and Troy has been on site with Alex when they did the evaluation to make that recommendation. So I would say, yes, they're, they're comfortable.
Your Honor, question. Andrew, does the $74,900 take care of all the storm drain stuff, all the parking lot stuff, and the alleyway? It's everything in one up to that amount?
Design.
Yep.
Design fees for the entirety of the project.
Everything, all the way to that, that end. Do we know where this funding source is? I know you're going to talk about it in the future, and is this a funding source that could be used for other roads in our community? Because here's, here's the real, here's a real kicker to this, is when I walk back to the third ward and I go to the residents on Seventh Avenue in the third ward, and I tell them that we're going to spend money to fix some parking lots that the city owns downtown, they're going to look at me cross-eyed because that road needs a full reconstruction on it. You can barely drive down it without your wheels falling off. So it's very hard for me to fix something in the city that I see other things that are way worse. I know the, working with it, the right timing, this and that, but I need to know if that funding could be used for other roads or if it's only for this project.
Legally, the funding for this could be taken for other projects. We have set money aside for parking lots. Over the, over the years, I'm getting to that page so I can quote you the amount, bear with me. We've been budgeting about $35,000 a year in maintenance funds, and I'm just falling apart here, for parking lots. So under our parking lot budget, capital outlay, $35,000 a year. Whatever is unspent, we carry forward to the next year. As of the end of 2024, we have $154,000 that we'll be carrying forward, adding to another $35,000. So that's one of the funding sources for the parking lot side of it. The, the alleyway, of course, those funds Andrew mentioned coming in from the utility companies, that would be going towards that. No, it's a damage settlement, so legally, you could probably take that to something else. We're looking at using a little bit of general MSA, it's called municipal state aid for streets, and this is a qualifying, you know, putting that into pavement. That we also pull into other street projects around the city. In fact, like, for the Junius project, we're looking at a couple hundred thousand of that funding source, we'll go into that. So on top of that, one of the funding sources we're looking at is we've had a separate fund where we receive some dividends on our insurance through the League of Minnesota Cities, and those I've been putting in, and if you remember, when I went through that long list of funds and all the restrictions, down towards the bottom, $200-plus thousand is in that fund, contingency reserve fund we have, looking at taking some of that to put it towards pavement. But you, as a council, could redirect that elsewhere as well. So long answer to your question, but, you know, there, the, many of these sources are restricted for pavement, but could go into other streets.
Any other questions?
Bill, I, again, I appreciate your abilities to assist the council on these numbers. I ran on reducing the real estate taxes to our constituents and our taxpayers in Fergus Falls. Whatever we can do to minimize or reduce real estate taxes in Fergus Falls, which we heard from the chamber during the economic meetings, is important. So, thank you.
And on a side note of that, that was kind of my goal when we started searching for funding sources, of looking what is funds on hand that are available, so we're not creating a new levy to finish this project that's coming about, because we have to get the, you know, the utility companies are going to do this project. So that was the driving factor.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, same sign. Motion is approved. Are we good for the consent agenda? Yep, consent agenda it is. Thank you. The remaining item is just purely announcements. Obviously, April 7th, a city council meeting, then the 16th, the committee of the whole, and then the 18th will be Good Friday, and city, city offices will be closed, and we can update garbage, but I'm assuming garbage will get moved to Wednesday, Thursday, as opposed to Thursday, Friday. With that, thank you for your time. The meeting, oh, one moment.
Your Honor, I need some clarification. If we want something added to the next committee of the whole, do we do that today, or do you want to do that during the council meeting, next council meeting? When would you?
Do that during a council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.